Like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for nations under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our midst. The clerk called a vote, please. Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
And the record will show that six of us elected officials or county commissioners are in the room. We're going to county commissioners during this panel of acts, Commissioner Mish. And I will turn now to our county attorney, Tony Plumb, to tell you that I am here today. Board, my understanding of this meeting is being called as an emergency meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D04 subdivision 3. It is in judgment of the board, my understanding, that the board must act immediately on some matters. And that is why the matter has been declared an emergency meeting. And the topics that are set forth on the agenda will be the only things that are considered for purposes of this meeting. Thank you, Attorney Plumb. Our first item on the agenda is to consider approving a temporary extension of business renewal licenses and fees for food, beverage, and lodging licenses until March 31 of 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second motion by Commissioner Brassad and the second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion on this item? Commissioner Mash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to thank you for being proactive about this. Excuse me. In terms of the license fees, it's something that I don't necessarily think about in terms of really adding up or helping small businesses. And after looking at the numbers with the data, it absolutely does. So thank you. I think this is a good move.
Thank you. And I will go on to say that the idea of the extension isn't really just pushing off the date they have to pay just for the sake of giving them more time. It's giving us more time to get business grants into their hands so they can use these business grants to help cover these type of expenses. So this three-month reprieve will be very beneficial to them and us to get the money into their hands. And again, this is an equivalent amount, I believe, of about $575,000 that we do take in for these monetary fees and license fees. And for this reason, it's a good deal of sum of money to a number of these businesses and will make a difference to them. Commissioner Mash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to clarify to for the public, so once we approve this, so businesses who don't meet the December deadline will automatically, and they don't have to have another process for asking for an abatement or an extension. So this will automatically be in place. And the new date will be for March 31 of 2021. And I just wanted to put that out there in terms of just understanding for businesses.
And that's correct. And for those businesses that have already paid this license fee, you will still be available in line for business grants. You can still get a business grant to reimburse yourself for those costs, for those fees you may have already paid that were due by the end of this month. Commissioner Reiner.
And so a lot of companies probably won't know about this. Is there some kind of plan for communication with them?
For that, I'll turn to Administrator Siviraja.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Commissioner Reiner. Yes, our public information area is ready with a press release to get that out to the media. We will also have it out on social media. We are sharing it with all of the city's economic development folks as well, the local chambers, in order to push the information out to as many entities as possible.
Thank you. And I also plan to communicate with all the city council members and mayors in the seven cities that are in my district. And I'm sure you will too on Facebook and everything else to help with that.
Thank you. And again, this is specifically related to renewal of business licenses, which affects mostly food and beverage and lodging. So those will be the businesses most heavily affected by this. Commissioner Gamache, because you're distant, I'll give you an opportunity to respond so you don't have to raise your hand or anything. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I had the same question that Commissioner Reiner had. And Administrator Siviraja handled that and released all the information, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any one opposed? That will pass unanimously. Secondly, on our agenda today, we'll consider approving criteria for the county business nonprofit relief grant program. As most of you are aware, we've received from the state of Minnesota a sum just short of $7 million that we want to get into the hands of our businesses as quickly as possible. So we're having this emergency board meeting to entertain this item. You received a document in your drop boxes recently with background information and proposed criteria, or eligibility criteria. And then it also lays out some changes you may or may not want to make in these criteria. So with that, we'll open the floor for discussion. Commissioner Reiner and Commissioner Meisner.
So I'm really happy that we're doing this. There are a lot of businesses that were untouched, or I shouldn't say untouched, did not receive benefit or relief from the first go around. We did go around four times, but we did change it along the way. But then I'm glad that we finally came to the realization of some other businesses that now will be available for this need. What I'd like to see, though, is because those businesses, now that we've expanded to and now that we've realized that they also are in need, that we take a look at either at the same time or maybe after the fact their need and possibly allow them to retroactively, I guess, be have a benefit from some of the previous rounds. You know, those $10,000 a few times. And had we, I guess, included them the first time, they had need then, they weren't subject to that need. We finally now realize that they are in need. And so just, I guess, if they can prove, I guess, that they had a greater need than we're able to give them now, that there's some consideration for that.
Well, thank you for those comments. My first response may be that the CARES Act dollars, which we were disseminating last time, had different criteria, federally regulated mandated criteria. And the funds we're disseminating this time are state dollars with a lot less restrictions. We have a lot more freedom to get this money into the hands of business. Again, we did set some of the criteria in the previous rounds, which did eliminate certain businesses from receiving those funds. But we did expend all those funds. So now this new round, I think we are giving priority, if I understand this correctly, we're giving priority to businesses who have not received any grant funding through the CARES Act. So just as you suggest, we will be looking at those, not just bars and restaurants, any business that was hurt by COVID-19 and the EEO 20-99, even the ripple effects. The question will be, could we go back and, I mean, we obviously can't go back and use CARES dollars.
Right.
We have to use our current state dollars. And the question is, how do we most evenly spread that around and get it to those businesses that need it? And that's what we're here for today, and I do appreciate your comments and understand them.
Okay, thank you.
You go. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, before I get started, I just got a text from the public that our audio is not coming through.
Administrator Siviraja.
Mr. Chair, I actually just sent a message indicating that the audio is not working correctly. But we will upload a clean version after the meeting. For some reason, the streaming is distorted, but the recording is clean. So that will be uploaded right after the meeting.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to share some feedback that businesses and nonprofits had shared with me. And I just want to relay the information. So I won't go, you know, business or nonprofit to nonprofit, but the broad stroke consistency has been biggest needs are rent and operation, obviously because of lack of income. One business owner made an interesting point that they had gotten federal PPP in the past, which helped out her staff, but not necessarily for the business owner. So again, as the business owner, she continues to struggle. And then for one of our nonprofits, and this kind of goes into depending what the federal funding, which is going to be coming later, but one of the needs are unpaid sick leave, risk pay, that kind of a thing. And then one of the business owners, which is, I know we're going to be discussing this, this is in the proposal, but we establish businesses, so kind of that gray area where they were in mid-project, they had to commit with the project and other kind of this predicament. And then, so that's kind of the broad strokes. Again, I would say I kept hearing about rent and operations, being able to pay for staff. And then I just want to list the actual companies and nonprofits that did reach out to me. So Morley Dance, Lebability, Grandpa's Ice Cream, Achieve Services, Alexandra House, Mute Care Properties, Stepping Stone, Urban Air, Saica Food Shelf, Fridley Alano, which is the 88 and Alanon chapters in Fridley, Margie's Kitchen and Cocktails, Over the Arena, Anderson's Residential Heating and AC. And that completes my comments at this time again. I just wanted to relay that.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. I too reached out to a number of businesses myself, industries more than specific businesses, just to find out how they're doing. And because I wanted to make sure we're more inclusive in this round of criteria, I talked to a number of attorneys who said, no, we're in shape. Yeah, we're hit a little bit, but not to the point where we need help. We're still working. There are certain sectors within lawyering that they're probably a whisper behind. You know, somebody that's planning wells and family planning isn't doing as much of that right now. Estate planning, because the seniors are staying more protected and staying home. So that was interesting to have that conversation and enlightening. And then I talked to some entertainers, live performers who are being crushed. They, since March 15 of 2020, have not done a thing and can't. And if that's how they live, they're living for decades. It's an important topic, so I will be adding some language. In fact, I'll read it now if you're willing. It's freelance or organized musicians and performing artists in Minnesota who work or reside in Anoka County are eligible to apply for grants under the solo business employee category or the home-based business category, if applicable, with no requirement of having one or more W-2 employees. So this just takes those live performers who have been doing it their entire life for a good deal of time and puts them in the category where they can get some relief. It obviously will not replace their income for an entire year, but they do have the ability to apply for unemployment and other sources as well. I'd like to thank Administrator Siviraja and the Attorney's Office, Chris Carney, I believe, for helping me with that language and for doing enough research that I was able to share with some musicians the Juilliard page, which had a plethora of opportunities for performing artists to reach out and get some help during this crisis. So, and again, I talked to a number of other industries, bars and restaurants, obviously, and that's pretty universal. Hotels, hotels are really being hit hard. So those are all categories that we have now included as eligible criteria. Anybody else have any comments on criteria? Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know when we received the letter from our state legislature, it was, their goal was very clearly to keep it simple and quick. Let's do as much as we can for the businesses and groups that have been left behind. So as we met and were talking through these guidelines or parameters, we've tried to make it as inclusive and as simple as possible. So, you know, looking at this, I think we've done pretty well. We will be handling these applications in-house. So that will give us, I think, a little bit more flexibility than when working with a third party. So if maybe someone answers a question maybe not quite right, or, you know, they're not sure what we're looking for, I think we'll be able to have a little bit more hands-on and be a little more pliable with our procedures. So I'm excited about getting this money out to people that don't follow into the bars and restaurant categories because just like everybody else, it's, I'm getting calls daily, multiple calls every day. Some people at the ends of their ropes. I've actually had to make some mental health referrals because there's been some pretty significant situations. So I think we all take this very seriously. We want to do what we can. I think a good example is the license fees that we just opened on. I think as the county board, we're pretty in touch with what's happening in our community. And I fully support this, and the sooner we can get the money out, the better.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad and Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, I really appreciate having an arts and musicians clause. And so essentially, they just have to prove that they worked in the past. I mean, if you're freelance, right, that they're in the space of arts or music.
I'm going to defer to Jakell eventually on that. But to me, they're going to have to prove that they had bookings that were canceled. And I think that would be one of the criteria. And one would be that they are, that they can show that they've made that kind of money in years past doing that. They can't say suddenly that they're an actor and they've never acted before, but they're an actor and they think they would have made $100,000 if they would have acted. That's probably not going to cut it. So it's going to have to be a true profession.
Thank you. And then just a couple of comments about this proposal too. I mean, first of all, I am really appreciative of that we are including chambers now that we can because we have a little bit more control over what the criteria is. Our local chambers have been economic partners to us, as you guys know, for years. So I'm pleased to see that. I do have now a couple of questions. Well, first, I'll have a question about our in-house application process. So I know that can be. So we will be reallocating staff to assist with this process. I know that Karen Skipper has also indicated that she would be willing to assist. So we will have a team of folks working on this that will not fall all on Jakell's lap because she has a lot on her plate already. So we do have staff that will be allocated towards this.
And for the edification review in public, our administrative fees for this round, our administrative costs are eligible, less than half of what they were from the CARES Act. On the CARES Act, I believe, we have 4.5% allocated for administration. And it's 2.5% here, so not less than half, but above half. So we can only use 2.5% of this money towards the administration of this, which it'll take every penny of that. It's a lot of work, and our staff is going to be working overtime to get it done and out the door on time. So, Commissioner Meisner.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm going to follow up on that question and go to a different question. So I understand financially that we are motivated to do it in-house because of the reasons you just stated. But then I'm curious then too, because I know for the CARES Act funding, one of the appeals for having a third party was just to take away any kind of perceived conflict of interest. So is there going to be something built into that process where that's a checks and balances? So that's a question for that. And then I do have another question about the proposal.
But I think the check and balance here is, to me, is we are setting the criteria here as policy. That's the only time elected officials will touch this. After that, it goes in-house to staff only, who I don't perceive any conflict of interest in helping business in Anoka County. In fact, their interest is to help business in Anoka County. So I would suggest that there is no conflict there. It's just important for the policymakers, the elected officials, to set that policy, set the criteria, and then ask staff to abide by it. Unless there's a deviation from criteria that staff is concerned about, we shouldn't hear about it after that.
Got it. Thank you. And then my question about the proposal for the grant amounts. We have this tiered, starting from business and nonprofits of 1 to 20 FTEs all the way up to 300 or more FTEs. And for that category, so business nonprofits with 300 or more FTE employees could be eligible up to $45,000 grants. And I did ask how many businesses in Anoka County actually are 300 or more? And I believe it was 47. So my question, because today we're really working out the details for some of these things, are the businesses with 300 or more, do they have more availability for resources? I want to say yes. And then, so then my question to us then, is that something that we want to consider in terms of just looking at that tier? Again, the only one I'm really questioning or wanting to delve a little bit deeper is the 300 or more employees.
Well, my response would be that they do have a lot of other resources, which you reach that size of business. We did hear last night that the HEALS Act passed through Congress, which will offer a great deal of resources to businesses, both at that level and on down to small businesses as well, a continuation of the PPP program, re-allegration of money there. So I do think that they have, and just by the size of their business, they have more human resources, people to access and gain access to funds. But $45,000 is a substantial grant. I think that will help a company like that.
Right.
Before we move on, I am going to formally request if my friendly amendment will be accepted by the motioner and the seconder.
There is no motion.
There was not a motion. Hold on. There wasn't a motion on this yet. I thought you were. That was the last one. Okay. Well, before I make an amendment, oh, then actually, I can just make an amendment to this before it's even moved. So I am going to, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Reiner first to see if he wants to add anything before we, because we should move this and get it on the table before.
I would suggest that we could just move it with including your amendment. And then there could be a second to that, and I guess I would do that.
And we should do that before we discuss it too much more. We should have it on the floor. I'll second. I have a motion by Commissioner Reiner and a second by Commissioner Gamache to conclude the criteria listed before you with the amendment that I will read one more time for the record. That is to allow freelance or organized musicians and performing artists in Minnesota who work or reside in Anoka County are eligible to apply for grants under the solo business employee category or home-based business category, if applicable, with no requirement of having one or more W-2 employees. So that is the motion amended and seconded before you. Further discussion? I will just say that there's a number of criteria listed here. We didn't read them all. The application for this will be a completely electronic online application at Anoka County's website. It will go live in the early part of January. We don't have an exact date just yet. Needless to say, it's the Christmas season. It will be, our staff will be working more than we want them to over the holidays to make sure that we can be ready in that first part of January to get these applications online. I believe it's in AnokaCounty/success. I'm not positive on the website yet. We'll have that publicized. But if you go to Anoka County's website, they will have a link over to the website that actually has the application. Commissioner Brassad.
I was just going to say, it is the same website addresses are AC red. So AnokaCountySuccess.org. It's AnokaCountySuccess.org.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I neglected to put in one piece of feedback since we're talking about an online application process. One of the businesses did want to relay that they felt that the process was a little bit overwhelming for them. And so I would just say that, you know, reach out again to our staff because they are excellent to help walk any business or business owner through the process. And then I also just wanted to clarify too, since we're not necessarily reading all the details, but as in the past for the CARES Act dollars, we're divvied up the whole bucket. This is not going to be divvied up in terms of certain amount for businesses, certain amount for nonprofits. This is the full bucket. We are just going to be allocating it until every last dime is spent helping people. So first come, first served with some of the earlier criteria that you had mentioned. But I did want to just point that out because that is a little bit different for this round.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. And I will read just a couple of the criteria, not all of them. But it's important to know that you are in good standing with the state of Minnesota, Secretary of State, and that you have no tax names filed against your organization. You must be licensed and in good standing with all the local city ordinances. And that if you did open during the pandemic, you are eligible for this round. You need to provide clear documentation on how the pandemic impacted your operations. And your startup costs for your business will not be included as an eligible criteria because you'd have the startup cost whether COVID-19 hit you or not. And then there are more. But that's kind of the early list of, and you'll find those all online. Just know that our staff is a phone call away, and we will do what we can to expedite your process. We are not going to hand out these grants purely newly. We are going to make sure that companies, businesses, people that are receiving these dollars are truly not only in need, but deserving that they have actually been affected by COVID-19. This will not be a windfall for anybody. However, with that said, it may be the savior for a great many. It may be the last thing that keeps them from having to close the doors for good or even close the doors for a year and then try to restart later, which is a monumental task. So with that said, there's no further discussion. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Reiner and Commissioner Gamache.
Not for today, possibly. But, you know, the way to really help businesses is to let them operate. And I'd like to have a future conversation about that with this board.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the addition of artists and musicians. I'm glad that you were able to sit down with the county attorney's office and others to work this out because I can only imagine that this is going to be a little difficult being that we probably have artists that have performed and musicians that have performed in Anoka County from almost all over the state and even people from Wisconsin. And I'm kind of wondering, I'm a little overwhelmed just trying to figure out how that will work. But I'm glad that we've got it in place and that you've already begun working with our team to begin that process because I think that's going to be a little overwhelming, as I indicated. But I appreciate that the opportunity and that we're going to try to do this because there is a big need. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the work that you've already done on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Is there any further discussion before we go to a vote? Seeing none. We can do a vote by acclamation here. Do we need a roll call vote? I mean, it's $7 million, but we're not signing a contract and we're not. I will turn to the county attorney for that answer. Can we just do a vote by acclamation here? Do we need a roll call vote for? Do we need a roll call vote for? Ah, Mr. Chair, since you're not spending money, you're just authorizing criteria at this point, so you can do it just by motion or on a voice vote. I think we should be very clear to follow up on Commissioner Ghamash's, this is performing artists, correct? Correct. As opposed to painters and sculptors and things like that. Correct. The public should be aware, you know, artists cover a broad category, but the intent of this board and this motion is to help those who are performing artists, correct? Thank you for the clarification. With that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That will pass unanimously. That does conclude our agenda for today. And being an emergency county board meeting, we can take up no other business. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Mike. Merry Christmas.